Good evening. I'd like to call this work session to order. We are having this as a special meeting so that we can do a work session of the overlay district. We'll do all the formalities when we actually have our seven o'clock meeting. So I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin so we can get going and do what we need to do.
Hello, Madam Mayor, board members. Thank you for this opportunity to give me a chance to do some of the cooler things tied to planning. I mean, you see those four words, you're gonna hear that a lot. Vision, growth, engagement, and facilitation. But I'd like to read that quote. "Yes, we form the cities, but then the cities form us." Every time we build anything, we affect the quality of life of people. That's basically what we're doing here in regards to the overlay district work session. Well, before I begin, I'd like to just do an introduction, and I want this to come off more as educational to the board and the general public. But if I were to ask, what is a moratorium? What is it? It's defined as a halt or temporary block on new types of development and issuance of permits, often imposed while a new general plan of action or zoning-based legislative amendment is completed. Local governments typically take this approach to take more immediate action, to place a hold on proposed projects, or to maintain the status quo while new regulations are being researched and considered. But when you're doing that, there are best practices. You'll hear that repeated as well. Some of the best practices, although imposing a moratorium is a useful tool to pause the pressures of some types of new development, there are guidelines and best practices that should be followed. One, when announcing the moratorium, the government entity should specify the purpose of the moratorium, which should be to research and implement amendments to its zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. Next, the moratorium should also be imposed for a specific duration of time. And finally, once adopted, the governing body should act promptly to begin the research and implementation of desired amendments to the zoning ordinance. But then you ask yourself, why here? Why Hope Mills? As we have kind of discussed before, over the past year, we've noticed a trend of particular uses being requested that could potentially create an issue of saturation. From a perspective of economic development, certain uses signify additional uses that benefit the surrounding area could potentially be developed in the future. However, in some instances, there are multiple uses of the same type, or uses that have negative impacts to the surrounding areas, and without a proper system of checks and balances, cities and towns are left open to trends that could be detrimental to positive As it relates to municipal action and recent activity, in response to these negative development trends, the town has adopted a moratorium. It was officially enacted on July 18th, 2022, for the purpose of allowing staff an opportunity to explore options tied to making recommendations to the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners. The goals and objectives are a six-month period of analysis and implementation, halting specific uses, and the establishment of my favorite word or phrase, an overlay system throughout amendments to, through amendments to the zoning ordinance. As it relates to the negative trends, I'll state that for the public record. The adopted moratorium applies to the review, consideration, approval, permitting, and construction of the following uses: motor vehicle parts and accessory sales, motor vehicle repair and bodywork, motor vehicle rentals, motor vehicle sales, new and used retail establishments, primarily tied to smoking shops and vape establishments. Now, advantages. What are some of the advantages of a moratorium? Data collection. It allows for the data collection for the enablement of a better system of controls to proactively address suburban sprawl, which can become a major issue in towns trying to grow. Permits, as stated before, it halts all new permits and applications, zoning applications for construction. This provides a period of time for implementation of strategies needed to address the issues. Duration, this is key. Specific duration of time is actually intended to minimize negative impact to businesses and landowners. It will blow your mind how many phone calls I received since we had enacted it, but I made sure they understood that most moratoriums over six months is considered to be counterproductive. So it's meant for a specific period of time so that a person negatively impacted by the moratorium is not feeling like you just eliminated the use outright. Development trends. It allows us to address negative development trends mutually shared between businesses and the general public at large. Many people don't realize, if you have a saturation of these new uses, the first person that's gonna get hit is the mom-and-pop store that has that small use. There's a specific place here in Hope Mills I take my car to for everything that I need done in my car. But imagine if 20 more places just like that with the bigger names, you're actually affecting him as well. So it's a lot of different people, like I said, in the general public at large that could be negatively impacted by what's going on. As it relates to adopted plans, it allows for the implementation of recommendations outlined in the Southwest County Land Use Plan, which provides goals, vocational criteria, and objectives for residential, but more specifically, commercial uses. And finally, facilitation provides the town of Hope Mills a timeframe to make the legislative amendments to the zoning ordinance. Frequently asked questions. This is every day now. How can I participate? What happens during the moratorium? During the moratorium period, staff will conduct a series of public work sessions, one of which is taking place now, to provide citizens, property owners, and businesses with an opportunity to provide input and feedback. During this time period, no applications or zoning applications for identified uses can be processed for approval. What about current applications? Any zoning approvals by the Board of Commissioners or applications submitted prior to the adoption of the moratorium will still be approved. May I still seek pre-development guidance? This is crucial. Yes, projects for developments may still meet with development, may still meet with the town of Hope Mills Planning Review Team to seek guidance on compliance with zoning ordinance regulations. We actually encourage that. We have it every Thursday. So you have people who are actually looking at some of these uses, who still know that we're not eliminating them out of the zoning code, so they're still coming to us getting guidance on the larger ones so that, once this moratorium is lifted, they're getting a lot of that feedback. So you can still actually pursue feedback from our planning review team during this time period. Can I make changes to an existing use that's prohibited? Yes, existing establishments tied to new, to uses identified in moratorium are allowed to make renovations because that's not a new business coming. How will the moratorium be enforced? As I stated before, no zoning permits will be processed or approved for any use identified in the adopted moratorium. Kenny is here. I don't legally have the authority to stop a building permit from being issued, but anything that needs a zoning permit, which is pretty much everything, I can halt the processing of the zoning permit that's needed. And what happens at the end of the moratorium period? Adopted, the adopted moratorium is set to sunset after a six-month period. After this time has expired, all identified uses will be allowed in accordance with any new adopted ordinance amendment. So that's the key. When December ends and these uses are now allowed, the plan is to have a new system of controls where they're still allowed in Hope Mills zoning ordinance. It's just they're gonna have to meet certain parameters that we're putting in place during this moratorium time period.
Madam Mayor. What happens at the end of six months and you need more time? Can you do an extension?
That is probably a legal question. I'm hoping I don't have to come to you guys and ask for an extension. I do think the board can legally do that, but I would also seek guidance or at least advise you to only extend it for a duration of time you think we need. I don't think that we're in a situation where we need, we're gonna need an additional six months because all the data that I'm looking at, a one-year period is gonna become very taxing to business owners. So if we are in a position where, and you'll see a timeline that I have later in the presentation, if it appears that we probably may need more time, we'll probably know that before we get to December, and we'll have that conversation. But I think if we do need to warrant an extension, we specifically state that it's for maybe another month or two. But we kind of get to that when we, we'll probably know more about that when we get to where it's time to go to planning board, but I'll have that mapped out later in the presentation. All right, so now let's talk overlay districts. What is it? What is an overlay district? It's a zone, an overlay zone is an additional zoning district that is laid over the top of two or more zoning districts or corridors, usually to introduce an additional standard or regulation. The overlay district text and the zoning ordinance might have additional or different regulations that apply within the identified district boundaries or corridors. Types, all kinds of overlay districts. Common standards or regulations in an overlay district may include building setbacks, density standards, lot sizes, impervious surface reduction, vegetation requirements, building types, and watershed-related activities. As it relates to the various types of overlay districts, below are a few types. You have your historic type, you have your airport overlay, and you have districts that regulate wetlands. In terms of what we have here, there are two established overlay districts that are regulated within the boundaries of Hope Mills, the Federal Regional Airport Overlay District, and the historic, Hope Mills Historic District. I'll give you some examples of what happens in the airport overlay district. This is sometimes an unpopular position that we have to take, but if you have a development of any size and it requires a stormwater system, you cannot have an open pond that actually has standing water in it anywhere near inside the overlay district. That is an FHA regulation, and it's something where you, if you think about it, what's the number-one thing that's attracted to standing water?
Geese.
Geese. You're in the flight path of airplanes, and so a lot of times, that can become expensive, but it's a major regulation, and the Chickenfoot Road area and all that development over there, that's in the heart of the airport overlay district. So that's a perfect example of a regulation that only applies within a specific boundary. We have one development off of San Henry Road, half of it's in the overlay, half of it's not. That's just how it played out, but when you hit that overlay district, these are automatic and they're ironclad. But let's talk about when. When is it appropriate or when is it not appropriate to do an overlay? If it is only on top of one underlying zoning district, then creating an overlay district may not be the best approach. If it only affects one zoning district, then the additional text can just be added into the, that one zoning district in the regular zoning ordinance. Adding it to the existing underlying zoning district is less work and makes more, makes for a more streamlined zoning ordinance. If the overlay is on top of two or more underlying zoning districts, then the creation of one overlay district may be actually tied to less work than amending two or three underlying zoning. So there are some situations where, if we are identifying a certain trend and the board wants us to actually particularly look at how to address that, in some instances, the overlay district may not be warranted. The types of regulations, again, in overlay districts, common standards or regulations in an overlay district may include building setbacks, density, lot sizes, impervious surface. Specific uses, building floor height minimums, floodproof and high water levels. Overlay districts can be implemented to address or regulate a number of uses and developments. For regulations that got building types to limit in specific uses within identified boundary or area, overlay districts can be a useful tool to guiding development trends. When they are appropriate, they may also be applied to text historical areas or encourage or discourage specific types of developments. That's kind of the area that we're going in now. Land within the historic overlay district may be subject to requirements that protect the historic nature of the area, and a community might use incentives along transit corridors to encourage higher development densities or target uses or control appearance. Now, as it relates to best practices, in terms of implementation, when reviewing a project of any size in the overlay zone, it is important that the development be consistent not only with the goals and objectives of the overlay, but with the long-term goals and strategies of the overall municipality's vision. It is also critical that the zoning provisions offer clear guidance to both property owners and the governing body charged with approving the proposals. Zoning requirements must be applied equally over all properties within the district. The ordinance not only must comply with any state and federal regulations, but must also be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the municipality's comprehensive plan. The procedures for adopting an overlay district are the same as for adopting any zoning or rezoning provision. The overlay provisions, as well as changes to the zoning map, must be approved by the local governing body for adoption. So in a nutshell, at the end of this entire initiative, we should have for you a package of legislative amendments that would amend our zoning ordinance, that has to go through planning board and back to the board, just like any other legislative change. So although we're talking about overlays and we have pre-slides, the end result is an amendment to our zoning ordinance. Best practices, while overlay zoning is a regulatory tool that creates a special zoning district placed over an extension base, existing base zone, the overlay district can share common boundaries with the base zone or cut across base zone boundaries. When adopting an overlay district, there are some basic guidelines that should be followed. The district should have a clearly defined purpose. Identify the areas that make up the district, the developments, that we need to develop specific rules that apply to the identified district, and it is important that the local governing body involve the general public at large. Now, advantages to overlays. Regulations. Overlay districts can establish additional and, in some instances, stricter regulations in addition to existing underlying zoning districts. Protections. Communities often use overlays to protect special features such as historic buildings and wetlands. They can also be used to promote specific development projects such as mixed-use developments and housing along transit corridors. Tailoring. It can also tailor regulations to specific properties and districts to meet specific community goals. Economic development. It can be a useful tool for municipalities looking to tailor a specific area for retail development or job creation if you're trying to attract a certain type of development. It allows for more flexibility in terms of how uses are regulated than the underlying zoning district. And context. It allows for more context in a development where a one-size-fits-all approach just may not be effective. Now, in terms of facilitation, what I like to do now is, what I've ultimately done is I've solicited the help of a consultant. A lot of times when we're dealing with these bigger, grander approaches with the staff levels that we have, we do reach out to experts. So I do have Tom Lloyd here, who he'll come in and talk about the facilitation and the step-by-step five, pretty much, month process that should get us to December with the adopted ordinance amendments that we're looking for.
Thanks, Chancellor. My name's Tom Lloyd. Some of you know me. As I was saying before the meeting, when I got out of graduate school, 1980, I'm dating myself, I was the first planner that the Joint Planning Board sent to Hope Mills. They would send a planner to each different town. And Ed Herring was the mayor, and I've worked with every mayor since then, and I've been planning director, I was interim director for a year and planning director for the county for 15 years. I retired, got into commercial real estate, just land. I only deal with land. But in my, and I was in economic development for seven years also as deputy director for, back then, F A E D C. So I'm gonna follow this, but what's really important is to address your issue, if we need more time. We don't really need more time for the legislation. I could have something back to you next week. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Several towns have already addressed the issue you're addressing, especially with vape/tobacco stores with separation requirements, and there's other things that we can do. But, and I'm grateful for this chance because I, I see the opportunity with Hope Mills. I've been saying this, Hope Mills is a beautiful town, and it's grown, and it's got all kinds of potential now that 295 is gonna get connected. But with that being said, you have to watch the development of the major corridors, and I was looking at the map that you handed out to Mrs. Moody. I'm also on the Joint Planning Board, by the way, so I'm still trying to figure out how the, the Joint Planning Board staff, what its role is at this point in time, when what we get on the Joint Planning Board is coming from the town staff. So I'm not really worried about that. But what, as a work session, I want to know, I mean, I have a list, and I'll go through this, this is the first work session, so I'm trying, I need feedback from what you are looking for. Now, in what Chancellor set out, there's additional tasks. I believe in the overlay concept. Now, you don't necessarily want, some overlays, every use that goes on in an overlay has to be a conditional use. I don't think you have the staff or the time for everybody that wants to develop in an overlay submit a conditional use, for a conditional use zoning. Not all overlays require that. I wrote the overlay district for the Coliseum Tourism Overlay District for the county. It's at the request of the Commissioners, but it's really not doing what it was supposed to do, which was attract businesses in and try to keep what, what businesses would be considered noxious to people coming in for the venue would be kept out, but such as motels, for example. All extended stay has to be, rooms have to be entered from the interior. So that's one thing they made a point. But overlay districts, at the stage you're in and development of this town I see are something that you can build on. We could handle the separation of the uses that I'm giving here, the five uses, easy enough. Spring Lake's done that. They did it three years ago, especially with tobacco shops, that's what they did. And you have other uses we could do with motor vehicle sales. You could put a minimum lot size of, say, two acres, and that would cut out these little half-acre used cars. So that can be handled enough. I would like to have more input from the board as to what you want. See, the overlay district is more for the future, how you want to see these corridors grow. I mean, I would suggest thinking about a highway overlay district, a highway services overlay district, on major roads that would be designated. And that's why we have these work sessions, and don't worry about the time, we have the time, but, but I really like, you have to have input and consensus from you all. I mean, I can come, we're gonna go ahead and meet in September with the citizens and the stakeholders. And I told Chancellor, I'd like to have another meeting to get back with you all and talk about our results. That's work session three, and that work session, you would have more input because you would have knowledge then of what the stakeholders are thinking, considering, and there's definitely, definitely gonna be separation with some of these uses. That's what's gonna be proposed now. But again, I need the feedback from, from this board, all right? But so we're gonna come back to you, and by the way, I'll be working with Chancellor on a regular basis, and I am familiar with the town because I've been out at this town for many, many years. Things like going to the lake and dating and whatnot, I've known so many people out here. So I'm familiar with the town, but I also know how it's growing, you know, I know, and we have to address things like, and we talked about this, activity nodes. So the Southwest Plan designates different intersections as activity nodes, but never gives an exact size for an activity node. Is it 300 feet? Is it 500 feet? And why does an activity node definitely have to be at an intersection? What about Millstone? I would call that a wary an activity node, all right? So we want to regulate between the activity nodes on major roads with these overlay districts, and I don't mean stricter regulation that everybody's gonna be upset with, but you can tie in, in the future, various development standards, different development standards, such as landscaping and/or setbacks within these. So you can build upon the regulation once you have the overlay district established. With respect to the, what you're gonna get back with legislation that addresses these uses and establishes the overlay district, as you decide you want them and what roads you want them on, okay? Then you can add, in the future, you can extend the overlay district, you can add more regulation. So it's something to build on as the town grows, and it's gonna grow, especially down these major corridors, once 295 gets connected. I mean, every road's gonna see a major change, even Parkton Road, which I'm on regularly. They're already building out there at the end of Parkton Road neighborhoods, so. So then we're gonna have a work session in September with stakeholders and citizens. Come back and present to you some proposed ordinance, but again, I may be contacting you all and definitely work with Chancellor to get feedback as to where you're seeing this go. What exactly do you want? I know that you want these regulated, these uses regulated and cut down and put specific areas, and that, that can be done easy enough. Yes, sir?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. But I think you have an opportunity now with the overlay districts, and I think this is where Chancellor's gone with this, to go further than just regulating these five uses, something that you can build on in the future when you look at your development/subdivision ordinance, and then decide how you want these corridors to look, kind of buffering do you want? Do you want all the lateral access between commercial uses aligned, not some here at the front of the lot, some at the back aligned so that its connectivity is straight for, between parcels? So I think we'll play by ear. Once we come back to you, I want to see what you think of what we found, because I definitely want to have your input as a board, because you want to be on board by the time it gets to you. Well, it's gonna go to the planning board, and to be quite honest with you, and I know Mrs. Moody's here, she's on the planning board with me. At this point in time, even I'm trying to figure out the role of the planning board in this, other than, where I personally, as my personal responsibility, I'm gonna go with the town recommendation on the planning board, and I think most of the planning board feels that way. I'm up here as a consultant, and by the way, that night, I won't be voting. I won't be able to vote. I'll just be sitting in the audience. Chancellor will do the presentation. I don't think they're gonna have a problem with anything we present. I think the bottom line is, are you all happy? And would you get something in place that you can build on in the future so that you can regulate Rockfish Road, Camden Road as they go out, Parkton Road? Planning board won't be a problem, it'll just be back to you in December, and again, barring some, I mean, you never know for sure, I can't say positively, but I don't see a problem in getting any legislation back to you all that addresses these issues. The main thing is that I get feedback from you all, and I'll be dealing with Chancellor on how to do that, because I really need to just to hear what you all want. You're gonna get what we suggest, but you may think of something else that you want in there too, and your concern. I want to hear what your concerns are as a board. I mean, are there any questions?
I do have maybe one.
Okay, Commissioner Legg.
Yes, sir.
What, what if any relations as far as working do you have with our inspection department, stormwater, public works?
I mean, I have what I need. I mean, I know most of them and actually have met with them privately on other issues, so I'll definitely be getting their feedback too, the staff's feedback, not just Chancellor, I said they just said just Chancellor, but Chancellor's the point that sets the meetings up with the rest of the staff, so they're definitely be involved.
Okay, thank you.
Because they can all, they also have problems with what's going on, and they can enlighten me as to some of the problems they're having.
Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts?
So the last slide I'll go over is the work session two with the citizens. We'll have data by then, and that's really what takes the longest, because the, these uses, they're not coded in the permitting program. It's just put down as commercial. So there's gonna have to be an inventory of where these uses are, because there's gonna be establishment of setback or separation, so you're gonna have to know where they are. So that's the existing conditions part, and we'll present to you the data and maps of where, where these uses are that you want to address. We're gonna have citizen engagement, there's gonna be, as Chancellor said, some citizens are gonna be for this, and I guess there's gonna be a whole lot that'll be concerned. Let's use that word, concerned. They'll be engaged. We'll have get-together survey that Chancellor's gonna put on the website to the general public to solicit more input. I'll take care of the GIS mapping, because this is Thomas Lloyd and Associates, so I have two people that will be working with me. Both of them were high up in the county's GIS system. One's in charge, and the other one was in charge in planning, is retired. So you'll have all the GIS will be taken care of, including the official zoning map whenever you establish where these corridors are, because the official Cause it's, the official zoning map's gonna have to reflect these, as part of the amendment process. Outlining the overlay strategy. Basically, on that one, we want to see, where do you want to go with this? What are some issues that you can address in the future? I know Chancellor was saying you really want to look at your subdivision ordinance, which is your development standards. And, you know, you may want to be stricter along these highway corridors than you do in other areas. Again, that's where your input's important. And then we'll, and we'll focus on those, we'll identify some of these areas you focus on. So, really, the, the addressing of motor vehicles, parts accessory sales, repair and bodywork, vehicle rentals, motor vehicle sales, smoke shops slash vape shops, those will be taken care of easy enough. I think what's more important, as important is, when we get these overlays in place, how do you want to see them address the future? Okay?
Mayor.
Yes?
I have a question for you, it might be for you or Chancellor. You know, you talked about subdivision and, um, something that Chancellor touched on with the airport overlays, like stormwater ponds and stuff. I, I'd kinda like to see, especially stormwater, um, you know, you go around town and, and you see these, a- and stormwater's not my thing, I, I don't know what's involved in it. But to me, it just looks like there's holes dug beside a business. The, they put a fence up around it to keep people out, cars run through the fence, they're never repaired, they're overgrown, nobody maintains them, and they're eyesore and they look terrible, there're mosquito breeding. And I, is there something that we might be able to touch on during this process for that? Or, um, you know, even making communities more walkable with sidewalks? I know that's in our subdivision ordinances. But, um, you know, we've had a, this board here and previous boards have had a push to get some sidewalks done. And, um, you know, we've had a big discussion here lately about ADA stuff. So, that's something that I would be interested in.
We can definitely approach that, we just have to make sure that any regulation we put in doesn't conflict with any state regulations, especially with storm ponds and things of that nature. Some of the way they're, they're regulated are tied to state requirements. So, we couldn't eliminate anything that would conflict with that. But I do think that we could have the conversation and see what things we can do to promote an aesthetical value in terms of the way it looks and things of that nature. A lot of people may not realize those, the vegetation that doesn't look that great has a purpose that serves in terms of.
Right, erosion.
Maintenance of these, the pond. But I do think we can have conversations on any level to see what we can add from an overlay standpoint, so long as it doesn't conflict with any other ordinance regulation. I do think that's something we can talk about.
Madam Mayor. I do have a question. And I was listening to what you said earlier about not reinventing the will. Is there any model footprint that would give us some informational, uh, give us a general idea to stimulate the process of us making suggestions, suggestions and recommendations on what direction we should go in? Because normally, uh, I'm not gonna say what I'm gonna say. But you normally have your subject matter expert that would kinda help pave the way and make it easy for you to walk that process. And you can come, you understand what I'm saying? That give us something to work with, then we can come back and give you our recommendations and suggestions.
We, we could do that. Um, and I, um, we, and, and before any planner does any major amendment, the first thing we're doing is looking at other cities.
Right.
How David dressed up.
Exactly what I wanna go with.
I'm pulling Pinehurst, I'm pulling Cedar Fairville, I'm pulling Greensboro. I'm looking at relative towns similar to ours in size, towns that are where we're trying to go and to see how they dealt with it. We may find some things in those ordinances that we don't agree with.
Right.
But we may find that one little gem that we can kinda cater to our. So, what we'll do is we'll find some of those examples and we'll funnel them to you guys. Because what Tom is saying too, this is gonna be a back and forth where we're not gonna just, you're not gonna hear from us in another month from a work session. We may have some engagement with you guys where we may forward you some information so that it gives you more of an opportunity to give us some feedback before the next session. But that's all part of, of data collection and things.
And one of the slides says something that's profound, and that is the future projection. I don't know if y'all familiar, Fort Benning, when Fort Benning grew, it grew overnight. Oh my, I mean, and I, I see the same thing happening now, especially with the fact that we're not keeping the soldiers' taxpayer dollars in this state now, we can grow even faster.
Yes, that's right.
Speaking from a military experience.
Yeah, when I was in the military.
I wanted to touch on one more thing because it's really important. And I came up with this when we were there, it's the MIA, municipal influencer area, alright? So, when it comes time for, and, and the county's gonna be looking at these within the next year, they're gonna start. And with the, the MIA only deals with development standards, it has nothing to do with zoning because there's no extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Right.
But it does do with an agreement between the county and the, the town of Hope Mills as to what the development standards that you want take place, especially, um, commercial. That's what usually happens along these corridors. So, as that comes along, be thinking too, because you don't want to annex land as it goes down, for example, Rockfish Road, once it's connected, Camden Road, and it's too late. That was the whole, the whole reason behind the MIA was so there didn't have to be retrofitting.
Right.
Sidewalks is one of the big ones, for example. Sidewalks, there was other issues with liability and maintenance with sidewalks. But nevertheless, there are development standards that can be negotiated with the county when the MIA, MIA is looked at. And that all ties in with these overlay districts. So, it's important that you really pay attention to the MIA agreement when it comes up and, and get as much as you can in there, seriously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, for those who are up here that may not know, could you explain the deti- the difference in a detention pond and a retention pond? Beth, do you wanna do it?
They're basically the same thing.
One holds water and one drains water.
Well.
But I don't know which is what.
I would make a ill at a joke, but. Only certain people in the room will know that.
So, the detention pond is basically holds the water, like, in perpetuity. And a retention pond holds the water for a certain amount of time and then releases the water once it gets to a certain level. So, they're virtually the same thing, but the functionality of them is just a little bit different. Like infiltration ponds, the water never leaves them. It goes in and it infiltrates down to a certain level and then sometimes it goes away during a drought. Sometimes it has a baseline and then it fills back up with the rain event. A retention pond fills up to a certain point and then it releases, which is allowable by state regulation. If I could take wet ponds out of our ordinance altogether, I would, but the state will not allow me to do that. I can't stand a wet pond. As far as I'm concerned, they don't work.
I agree with you. But that's not my, that's not my job.
Any other questions? Okay.
But, um, as we conclude, one thing I wanna, there's a couple of things I just want to make sure that everyone's listening very clear. When we start, we're talking stakeholder and citizen engagement, that is very important to me. And one thing that I've always learned in the planning field is everyone wants one thing, a seat at the table. We may not be able to address everything the citizens want, but as long as they feel they had an opportunity to be heard. So, what you're gonna see rolled out within the next week or so is gonna be a series of surveys that are meant to allow us to collect some feedback from the general public so that for the next work session, we can provide you on what we were told. Business communities, they wanna make sure I've got enough call from every major development owner in this area. What can I do, can I do this, can I not do this? We've made it clear to them what the parameters are, but I want more feedback from them. What do you guys want to see done? What areas do you want us to see focused, uh, focused on? Uh, the citizens as well, because the citizens of Hope Mills, who we're doing all this for. And so, um, you'll see that engagement coming for the next, a particular work session. Um, you'll see us directly engage you guys, just to make sure, I may give you some examples of some things, but I'm wanting as much feedback and then we can funnel to Tom and his team as much as we can. So that at the end of the day, we're packaging this up. We may not be able to address every single issue that plagues the town, but if we're talking about future projections, we're dealing with what we're having a problem with now with those uses. But I'm trying to project with the level of development we have, how can we be more proactive to get in front of this stuff and start to have guided as opposed to us chasing development? Now, if you have overlays in place, I don't wanna say it doesn't matter what they have, but if we have a system of checks and balances in place and guidance with these overlays, we now don't have to worry if we have saturation or if we have car dealerships right off Main Street. We now have uses that are allowed, so we're not eliminating them, we're just funneling them so that it's more, it's done more in a, in a more strategic manner. But, um, if you guys, uh, I'd like to open up the door to any more questions that you may have. Otherwise, I would definitely be engaging you guys very heavily over the next, uh, couple of weeks to get as much feedback from you guys as we can. I think Tom wants to say something else. Oh, go ahead.
No, I, I did have a question. I wanted to know, would this be a good time for us to utilize postage and mail some of the flyers out to people uh, with QR codes and maybe partnering with our pastors coalition? Because just telling people it's on the website, I don't think we're gonna get the engagement that we want or that we need.
I think that's an amazing idea, because there's not only, there's, there's not one way. Sometimes it's on the website, sometimes it's utilized social media. Uh, the QR code, I love that because people don't realize our zoning, uh, signs, um, have QR codes on them. So, we can do postcards. I'm old school, I, I go door to door, uh, sometimes. We can mail out, we can do a lot of different ways. Because the key is just letting you guys know we're engaging the public. What you're talking about is the multiple avenues we utilize to engage the public. Everybody didn't have social media, everybody didn't have the ability to, to click on our website. So, as many avenues as we can do, I remember one time when we were doing something, I think it was the donor hole legislation. I just went door to door to every business in the town, every single one of them. This is, cause a lot of times, it, it depends, if you get a, a postcard in the mail, you may read it. If a city of, town of Hope Mills employee comes by your business and tells you, we have a work session in a couple of weeks, I want your feedback, that hits a little bit more personal to them. And so, I, I welcome that. So, I will definitely be utilizing multiple avenues to reach out to the stakeholders.
Schools too.
Yeah, that's another good example.
With like a heading, like what do you wanna see in Hope Mills or something, but not like the jargon that we use, because I don't think.
When we're dealing with the public, I gotta take the bow tie off. I gotta stop using the aesthetical words and things of that nature. You do have to make it a little bit more, uh, easier to understand in layman terms and something catchy so that someone who doesn't, who aren't super nerds like Tom and I uh, will understand what we're asking them for. And some of it may be a little educational, that's what I wanted to, to do for this session. Not necessarily for us, but for the general public watching. I wanted them to understand what a moratorium is, what an overlay district is, so that they'll know what we're talking about. And now we move forward, but those surveys may have a piece of it that's just informational, but something catchy that allows people to kinda be engaged.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Lloyd?
I just wanna add one last thing. It's difficult when you have to plan for the future and you don't have extraterritorial jurisdiction. But what we do have and what we're, I'm gonna be looking at closely is that Southwest Cumberland Plan, Mayor, you were here when it was done, that plan took, took time, a lot of time, and they, because it was really analyzed. So, we want to stay consistent with that plan and what we bring to you so that as you annex and grow, hopefully that plan out in the county will have been followed, which most of the time they, uh, the staff does. So, um, we're gonna be consistent with the, uh, Southwest Cumberland Plan, which, cause that's what's important. You want to be able to extend these overlays as you annex. And not extend an overlay where you already have five vape shops within a half a mile.
Any other? Okay.
But, um, like I said before, I thank you guys for the opportunity. If you have any questions, any feedback, um, give me a call, let me know. And, uh, like I said, this is gonna be a working, uh, revolving relationship for the next six months until we pretty much feel that we've, uh, resolved some issues.
Will that, uh, September meeting be at our, we only have one meeting in September, so we're gonna plan it for, uh, prior to that September meeting?
Is that the, what's the, what's the date on that?
The 19th?
19th.
19th.
This, this format's perfect. Basically, every month we have one, one hour prior to. Not unless you guys think we may, we start getting a lot of information, where you need more time, let us know. This one hour format prior to, uh, the second.
When any informational stuff could be sent by email too, so that would be helpful.
And I, and I welcome that, I do not mind, uh, call as much as, as possible because I'd rather more feedback that we funnel than, than less. So, please don't think that you could bother me.
Mayor, I got a question.
Okay.
Before we close this, um, and this is off topic really, but, you know, the Southwest Cumberland plan, that, that plan's probably 10 years old now. Is there any plans on looking at revising that plan? Cause a lot of things has changed in 10 years. And what, what people thought might have been a good use for something isn't that way any longer? Cause I know we've approved some stuff where we have to state that it is not in line with that plan. And, um, so that, to me, it's a good, it's a good plan in a lot of ways still, but I, I believe it's getting a little outdated.
Would I say that, and it is outdated. And the problem with all these plans is they get outdated because there's, the county's broken into all these different areas and, and these are area plans. The problem is, is that the town doesn't schedule what takes place in the county. When I referred to the Southwest Plan, most of these plans do have checks and balances with respect to strip commercial development in this nodal concept. That's what I was talking about. Now, there's not a whole lot we can do, and I was gonna talk to Mrs. Moody after this meeting on the, uh, in bringing and making, there, there, it, it's gotta take place up there because what's gonna happen? The planning staff has to be told, we're moving this plan up. These plans are already laid out as to when they're gonna take place, what follows what. So, for example, they had the North Central Plan, which is Ramsey Street up to the county line, way down. And, and I fought to have that moved up because there's, there's a lot of growth going up Ramsey Street. You can't wait 15 more years to do another plan, it's gotta happen now. So, they moved it up to after the Spring Lake Plan. The same needs to be done with the Southwest Plan because th- this is, this area of the county's growing, alright? So, the work has to come with pressure to, to move the plan up. There, there's areas of the county that aren't growing, you know, I, and you know where they are. You can go up 95 and see them. The Wade Falcon and Goblin areas aren't growing right now. Okay, so the Cedar Creek area's not really growing right now. Parts of the county that are growing need to be, new plans need to be amended.
Okay.
The reason I refer to Southwest Plan is, it does address pretty well the nodal concept around intersections and cutting down on strip commercial and it has goals and objectives. So, yeah, these plans never really should be thought of as addressing everything parcel by parcel because of just parcel by parcel as it looked at, it's just a general concept, then you come out with a vision. If we can get this so that we can hold whoever does the rezonings out in the county, because you're gonna annex, you're gonna wanna annex as a town, as, as you grow out towards 295 especially. So, we want to make sure that your representative on the planning board pushes what the plan's adopted. The, the plan isn't bad in a general term, it, but it's never meant to have been parcel by parcel. But you're right, i- it does need to be addressed and be moved up. I don't know where it is now, do you remember?
Yeah, it's another two or three years that I have done some push work, but they tell me that there's other things that are there and that we can't do it right now, but there are other options I'd love to talk to the board about.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, and so.
Maybe we could, maybe we could look at that in a future work session.
And it'll be a recommendation, by the way, that comes out of this study.
And I think we were advised to do like amendments to the plan. That way, instead of having to rewrite the whole plan, if we did amendments, like if you take parcel by parcel and start looking at them and then do an amendment, because that way you don't have to rewrite the entire plan, which affects other areas other than just Hope Mills. And that's something that we probably need to take a closer look at, because what we've done is we're reacting when something's brought to us. Instead of we could be proactive by just taking a look at the whole plan in advance. Because many of the areas have changed just because of I-295 now.
I will say, was it Long Range Plan or Trey? If you recall, we had that NC Commerce Study, Corridor Study, they had to suspend it because of COVID, but I'm talking about re-engaging it. If you recall, Long Range Planning was a part of the committee that we had, and the goal of it was when we got finished with that study, to possibly look at what would need to be done to possibly put a request to move up the change to the Southwest Plan. So I do think with their push, with our push, as resulting recommendations from both of these plans, I do think that that could possibly help. But I do think the goal of everyone, because most comprehensive plans are not meant to be permanent anyway, after about a 10-year period, and I look at it in terms of what you just said. This is perfectly normal for some rezoners to require an amendment to the plan, but when you start seeing so many of them, you start wondering, does the plan need to be updated? And I do think we're teetering around that period of time. I definitely don't think we want to wait two years, but I would love to see if the recommendations of this, conclusion of this initiative could give Hope Mills a little punch to be able to get the county to move forward with updating that a little quicker.
Anything else? All righty then, well then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this.
Motion to adjourn the work session.
This work session, and what we have is five minutes until showtime. Everybody will be back ready to go.